All right, good morning, everyone. We will begin today's Board of Supervisors meeting here at the Visalia Convention Center as we're getting renovated. I heard that renovation started yesterday without any hitches anyway, or nobody at least shared those with me. So we'll start with the flag salute, followed by a moment of silence, and we'll be led by Supervisor Valero.
Ready, salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item is Board of Supervisors matters, and we will start with Supervisor Vanderpoel.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
The supervisor behind the speaker.
Yeah, I'm hiding over here, but I am here. A few things I wanted to go over, definitely already been a hectic start to the week. I had to spend quite a bit of time in urgent care yesterday. My son cut his head open and a twenty-month-old with four stitches in his head is an early pretty situation. But he's okay now, so he slept well and doing well. So he's just matching his dad with head injuries, I guess. So a few meetings, public meetings that I wanted to cover for this week and next that are coming up. This Wednesday at 2:00 p.m., LAFKA will be having their monthly meeting, but this will be located at the TCAG office. That's different than our board office because like the chairman mentioned, the board office is under construction currently. Thursday at 9:00 a.m., I was just leaning over and telling Dennis that I'm the alternate on the Eastern Two League Groundwater Sustainability Authority, and the one time Dennis is not able to make a meeting, I am covering for him, but that meeting has a workshop that begins at 9:00. And so I get to spend my entire day on Thursday in Porterville, so not too many people would celebrate that, but...
I really appreciate you, though.
I'm looking forward to doing that, Dennis, and I will definitely report back and let you know how everything went. Monday on June 10th at 1:00 p.m. at the Greater Cuyahoga Conservation District, well, we have a Greater Cuyahoga Water, Cuyahoga Delta Water Conservation District Office. We have a Greater Cuyahoga Groundwater Sustainability Agency meeting at 1:00 p.m. There's a Water Commission later meeting later that afternoon at 3:00 p.m. And then I get the joy of representing the county at a mediation for a, some litigation that we are involved in regarding San Joaquin Valley Insurance Authority, and it's in my old stomping grounds in downtown Los Angeles, not looking forward to the traffic there. On June 13th at 9:00 a.m., there will be a First Five Technical Advisory Committee meeting at the First Five Office. And then the last thing I wanted to mention is actually an event that will be happening here, not this upcoming Saturday, but next Saturday, the 15th. California State Ambits will be having their annual convention right here in Visalia, and they asked that I come and make some welcome remarks to the county. Look forward to doing that. It's a great event and sure appreciate the veteran service to our country and them coming here to Visalia to enjoy our local fruits and labor here. So that's all I've got.
Very good. Supervisor Shacklin?
Yes, it's been a busy couple of weeks since we haven't, we didn't meet because of the holiday last week. Excuse me. I attended the Academy 17 Fire Graduation at the Agri Center. We have three new firefighters within Tulare County Fire Family. On the following Thursday, every year Quail Park has a Hero's Breakfast. They invite all first responders within Tulare County at Quail Park and have a nice breakfast and give away some raffle prizes and all, so that's always a nice thing. The following Friday, I was at the Sun Gazette doing a podcast, and you can hear that, the Paper Trail Podcast from the Sun Gazette. I talked a little bit about homelessness and some other things going on in the county.
You have a solution to homelessness?
I do, yes. Yeah, it's easy to solve, right. On Saturday, the 25th, I attended the unveiling of the Soldier's Cross at the Visalia Veterans Memorial Hall. I don't know if you remember in the news, there was some vandalism to it, and there's an organization called VetArts.org that made a new bronze statue, so that was unveiled there. And following that, I attended the Pride Visalia Event at the Lumber Yard, which was, every year is getting bigger and better with probably over 3,000 people in attendance this last year. On Monday, the Memorial Day, I attended the tribute at the Visalia Cemetery. Following Tuesday was Elder Abuse Awareness Day that we attended out at Government Plaza. Last night, I presented to the Sunset Rotary Club, and this afternoon, we're gonna do the Flip the Switch on our new, I hope the lights, if the lights dim around 2:00 o'clock, you'll know why. Sorry. This Saturday, Senator Grove is having a Veterans Pancake Breakfast at the Visalia Veterans Memorial Hall. If I get up in time, I'll be attending that. You know, Saturday, folks, come on, 7:00 a.m. is early. And then next Thursday, I will be attending the Visalia Chamber of Commerce Man, Woman, and Business of the Year Awards. That's it.
Very good. Supervisor Valero?
Awesome, thank you. Last week, I attended various events and meetings, which include the following. I also attended the Academy Fire Graduation Number 17. It was a great event and always honored to be there and participate and see the graduates being pinned by their families. In addition to that, I was at the Smith Mountain Cemetery for the Memorial Day Service for Dinuba. I also attended the Elder Abuse Awareness Event that happened at Government Plaza. Thank you to HHSA for putting that on. Beautiful event while attended and raising awareness for a much-needed cause. I then went off to Bitwise Industries in Fresno last week, attending a meeting for mother coders. It's through the Geek Academy in Fresno, and so they're looking for single mother cohort, so being able to bring single mothers together to build a community to support tech and website education. And so we'll also include a paid internship plus job placement thereafter, and looking for participants in Tulare County to participate in this endeavor. I also had the opportunity to go to Ivanhoe for an Ivanhoe Town Council, and I want to thank the Planning Department and the RMA staff for presenting on the general plan and helping the Ivanhoe community think about their community in different ways. I also attended the Scammers Workshop for Seniors in Woodlake that happened last week, also part of Elder Abuse Awareness Month. And then I attended the Open House for Dinuba Children's Services. All the services offered under one umbrella is amazing, and again, this cross-sector collaboration that I think is powerful in order to serve the needs of our youth in the county. I also participated in the Almonte Middle School Career Day, so I was able to talk to students about county governance, because sometimes they don't know what county supervisors do, so being there to educate as well as empower our students to learn more about government and supporting their communities especially. And then I also partnered with School Board Trustee Lloyd McClart to host a Badger Community Meeting to discuss the Old Sierra School that is up there that hasn't been used and has been vacant for the past few years now. So the residents of the area are interested in turning the school into an arts and community center. So it was great to see staff as from Supervisor Magzig's office from Fresno County, since there were also people there from Miramonte as well as Pinehurst Communities, both of which are in Fresno County, but Badger being the site in which the Sierra School is at. So again, making sure that we are providing the need out there in the community of Badger. And then I will be attending the LAFKA Meeting tomorrow on behalf of my colleague Supervisor Townsend. And then I will also be attending the Pancake Breakfast through Senator Grove's office in honor of our veterans, and that is all I have. Thank you.
Supervisor Townsend?
Supervisor Valero, can you and Supervisor Shacklin save some pancakes from the breakfast? I also will not be able to attend the breakfast.
Well, I...
Don't count on me.
Yeah, don't miss a one. Well, I also attended the World Elder Abuse Awareness Ceremony at Government Plaza, and that was very nice presentations by all and the chairman presenting our proclamation on behalf of the board. And next day, was able to record a podcast with Hopper in the Morning after going off the radio. He's spending his time doing these podcasts, so that's the second one that I've done just regarding things that are going on in the county. And on that, I sort of focused on the legislative trip that we had to Sacramento, which was an interesting topic. We had an exhilarating workshop on EQ Compost the other day, and Supervisor Crocker and I attended, and thank you for all that showed up to that to provide some additional information. And I was able to speak at the Porterville Breakfast Rotary the other day, and again, just give an update about things that are going on in the county, and they had a lot of really good pointed questions, since they're my fellow Rotarians, they like to ask all the hard questions, but it was really a good time. And then also kudos to Chairman Crocker for setting up the way that we're going to do the State of the County this year in having each of the districts do a little highlight about what's going on in their district. I guess I was the guinea pig yesterday for the video, but thanks Mike and crew back there for coming out and filming at the South County Detention Facility yesterday, and thank the Board's Office for our little surprise visit, so when they came to throw us off-site, instead, they allowed us to go inside and do a little bit of filming in there as well. And so that was really good, looking forward to the outcome of that, and thanks Sam for putting that all together, appreciate that. And then also today, I'll also be attending the Flip the Switch as we switch it over to Solar. Thank you.
Very good. I just want to highlight a few things from our last meeting and a couple of things moving forward. I attended the Farmersville Memorial Parade and just want to thank the chief for making Parade One available. The grand marshal for the Farmersville Memorial Parade was one of our former, very own, Mr. Ron Parrish, and so it was a great honor for him. I must say, our engine was much better looking than the engine that he was on, just a little bit of pride for us. Last Friday, I attended a meeting with a couple other county supervisors from the San Joaquin Valley and meeting with our regional forester in Vallejo and the Regional Office, Mr. Randy Moore, and it was a very fruitful meeting, I felt. There was a couple hours that we got to spend with him and talk about his region, which Region 5 is almost all of California. There's a few pockets on the eastern side and in the far north that are outside of the region, as well as all the Pacific Islands that are included in that region. So he's responsible for all national forests and making sure that, we talked about some of the unique challenges that we have here in Tulare County in particular with the monument designation, as well as as a region from the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District standpoint, how we can do more prescribed burnings, how we can work together so that we can allow for them. Their ultimate goal is to have about half a million acres in prescribed burns over the next several years. Last year, they had about 65,000 acres that were burned in prescribed burns, and they anticipate that 9 million is needed to be treated. So 65,000 out of 9 million, 65,000 sounds great, but when you consider that 9 million needs to be treated, it's not quite enough. So we talked about alternatives. The main message was discussing shared stewardship and how even though it may have a designation as the United States Department of Agriculture and the Forest Service, that's the primary stewards of it, it's really our lands. These are lands in our counties, these are lands that we recreate in, and so it's, you know, the impacts that have, you know, and having that shared stewardship where we're all in it together to try and work on solutions on all of the above approach, whether it comes towards, you know, creating more water for our communities and for our farms, whether it's having air quality, reducing our air quality impacts from catastrophic fires, keeping the public safe from catastrophic fires. All of those kind of go together, as well as having environmental benefits and economic benefits from the national forests. And I think there's, you know, we're working towards getting something together. He also shared that they would make sure that the local forest supervisors were coordinating with us and working with us and being very engaged. We've recently had a little bit of turnover in our local supervisor, and so just making sure that the new individuals that are coming onboard continue to stay engaged with the county. So overall, it was very productive. This week, the Sierra Nevada Conservancy, which is a state agency with several cabinet-level officials as well as county supervisors from throughout the Sierra Nevada range, so the eastern part of the state will be meeting in our region and the southern region, and they'll be meeting in Kern River, I believe, Kern Valley this week. And the only other thing I wanted to highlight is that next week, TCAG will be taking a trip to Washington, D.C. as our annual trip that we take to lobby and make sure that we're, folks are understanding what our priorities are in light of the still talks of infrastructure project or package. We're still discussing farm-to-market routes, specifically grant applications for a new Tulare interchange there at the Farm Show, and included with those two, we have partnered with the International Agri Center, and they will be bringing Rosa Brothers Ice Cream to the United States Capitol. And it's been quite a bit of logistical challenges to get the ice cream in the Capitol without, you know, all the dogs sniffing and licking up all the ice cream, but I think we have it figured out, and so I think it's going to be a unique way to highlight some of Tulare County's issues and our needs and wants and get staff and congressional members to get a wonderful treat that we get all the time. So it's a nice nexus to help them understand that California is not just San Francisco and Los Angeles, which I think a lot of people from outside of the area forget. So not that there's anything wrong with it, well, there are things wrong with them, but we won't get into that. With that, we'll go ahead and move on to item number two, recognition of Tulare County employees who have been selected by their respective departments to be honored in the Employee Recognition Program. And we have, do we have staff that's, or you want me to read the script first? Let me read the script first. Let me follow the script. Well, I was reading, I was reading the agenda, but that doesn't sound right. All right, so we've got item number two, so if there's any nominees in attendance for 2018 Employee of the Year, we'd like to recognize you first and foremost. This is a big deal just to be nominated. So if you've been nominated for Employee of the Year, if you want to stand, wave your hand, something along those lines. We, I think it's significant just to be at that point where your peers and your supervisors and others have already recognized the great work that you've done, and so we appreciate all the work that you do. It's, I think it's very challenging speaking for the board to be able to narrow it down just to one, but we want to recognize all of your fine achievements and the things that you're helping us achieve on a regular basis. With that, it is said that the employee of the year has a strong work ethic, so much that it is contagious among other employees in their department. This employee is regarded as having a can-do attitude while obtaining results. So far, no one's been narrowed down.
Is that you, Stan?
That's right. This person conducts business with a smile on their face. Every task is done in a positive manner. Okay, some people aren't smiling, so. The job duties at hand require this person to deal with stressful situations on a daily basis. With today's political climate and the passage of Prop 64, this employee is partly responsible for the vast majority of the county's cannabis problem. Maybe we're narrowing it down. With a 90% abatement rate, the statistics speak for themselves. 333 documented grow site locations resulting in 312 closed violations and 76 sites abated. This employee has been the lead inspector in several high-level investigations in the Three Rivers area. They continually seek to learn new information and techniques to help them improve their day-to-day operations. This employee's hard work and preparation has led to 60 warrants, which resulted in the eradication of over 86,630 marijuana plants and a cost recovery of $78,372. Now, it's my pleasure to announce the 2018 Employee of the Year, a person who will receive an extra week of paid vacation...
Wow.
...from the Resource Management Agency, Troy Barker. Now, I'd like to invite Troy to come up to the podium, along with Mike Washum, Associate Director of Resource Management Agency, just to say a few words about him.
Yeah, I'd just like to say that...
Into the microphone, please. We are live streaming. Don't get too cozy, Mike.
I'd just like to say Troy has been described as one amazing man, and that comes from a voice of authority, his wife of over 10 years, Rita. They've got two sons, Austin, 18, I believe he's graduating this year, and Logan, 16. They recently built a new home that they've recently moved into. I know that you've talked about his activities with abatement of illicit cannabis grows, but prior to coming to the county, Troy worked 15 years with the City of Tulare's Police Department, and after that, he was three years as a detective in the T-RAT Vehicle Task Force, and so he's bringing a lot of experience to the table. Some of his hobbies, he likes to off-road motorcycle ride, he likes to deep-sea fish, so he's got those outdoor activities nailed. And I'd just like to say, I also know that he likes country music, because I ran into him at the Cellar Door, him and his wife at the Cellar Door, for a concert from our local band, Leaving Austin, so we actually enjoyed that evening. And then finally, his direct supervisor is Mike Rowe, and Mike says that Troy does what his tasks, completes them with a smile and in a timely fashion and gets a very complete, thorough end product, his reports, he doesn't leave anything to fall through the cracks. So I'd just like to congratulate Troy on being this year's Employee of the Year.
Did you want to say anything, Troy?
I could say it from here, I'm here.
But if you wouldn't mind, into the microphone, just so if there's any listeners online, they can hear it.
Oh, okay. No, I just want to say that the award's greatly appreciated. The opportunity to work for the county itself was appreciated. When Mike brought me on in 2017 as extra help, I didn't know how it was going to turn out, so to be here today is just, I'm very, very appreciative. So I work with a great group of individuals that make my job easy, so they make me look good, so it's really not just me. So other than that, I mean, I'm just very appreciative. Thank you very much.
Well, Troy, before you sit down, why don't we maybe get a picture, and we'll just stand, and maybe you can get over on this corner over here? No, 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 that's all good. There we go. You want to stand?
I thought you were standing.
Yeah, I know. Need a clarifying.
Let's not forget, folks, that we have over 5,000 employees with the county, so to narrow it down even to this group that was nominated, and Troy, thank you very much.
And I'd also like to share just that, again, there are several key elements to being an effective leader, and that is job performance, customer service, how you treat people, teamwork, and initiative. And so all of you that were nominated today, you continue to make exceptional contributions to our county in support of providing quality service to improve and sustain the region's safety, economic well-being, and quality of life. So again, it is because of employees like you and everyone in this room who work to build the trust, respect, and support of its residents in a collaborative, fair, and effective way. So again, thank you all for your continued work and success at the county.
Any other comments?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, just want to congratulate Troy. I think it's a heck of an honor, and he's already walked out, but...
He's got to bait some more problems.
Yeah, he's got more marijuana to go eradicate, so I just want to thank Troy. I think it's a wonderful, wonderful honor to be selected amongst the over 4,000 employees that we have here in Tulare County and the Employee of the Year. You know, in my 11th year on the board, and there's only been 11 individuals, and you're amongst that Elite 11 group, but want to congratulate and thank all of the employees who were even nominated by their department. They clearly stood amongst the cream of the crop in their peer group and in their workforce, and I think it's one heck of an honor to even be nominated to a point of being considered to be the Tulare County Employee of the Year. So congratulations to all of you. It's not an easy choice, narrowing it down to just one, but if you continue to be stellar, which I'm sure you will, there are many more opportunities in the future, so just keep working for us. Thank you.
I think it's great, all the, just being able to see all the great work that's happening through the process. Selecting the individual may not be the most fun of tasks from the board's standpoint, but seeing everyone's great work ethic and the things that we don't normally get to see on a regular basis as far as what's being highlighted, it's a great process that I enjoy seeing their fruits. And I think that it's also great, as this year, we've kind of had a little bit of an emphasis on code enforcement, that it just so happens that the individual that was selected also is from that vein, so I appreciate that, and it's a great, thanks staff as well. I think it's also important for the department heads and other folks that are here to make sure that you're submitting applications and that you're recognizing these individuals, because we all know that you have some great employees, and so making sure that they're getting the proper recognition is something that's very worthwhile. So thank you, everyone that's participated. With that, we'll go to item three, public comments. If there's anyone wishing to speak on matters that are within the board's jurisdiction but not on today's agenda, please meander your way forward to the podium, state your name and address if you wouldn't mind, or your position.
Yes. Good morning, my name's Alberto Barrigan. I'm the Transit Manager for Tulare County Area Transit, and I'm here to announce that the Transit Division has a new transit website. We are gone live. The transit website can be accessed at www.ridetcat.org. It's a great new website, like I said, focused on customer service and easy to navigate through, has a great feature. One of the features is the Transit Planner feature. You can plan a trip and schedule a trip at your convenience. So we're, again, we're happy to announce that we're live, and let us know what you think. We'd be glad to hear your comments, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Albert.
Thank you.
What was he, web address?
Ridetcat.org?
Yes.
T-C-A-T.
Oh, I did T-D-O-G. T-Dog.
T-Dog. Very good.
That was it?
Thank you, thank you. Any other public comments? Seeing none, we will move into our consent calendar, items four through 53. Are there any items that need to be pulled, or additions for comments or edits from members of the board or staff?
I believe item 46, the department was going to speak to.
Yes.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Board CAO, Sherman Dix, Assistant Director, Resource Management Agency. Would like to speak, just some clarification on item 46, which is the Seville Water Operating Budget. The odd 308 that's attached to this item indicates $87,000 in net county costs. The Fiscal Impact Section only discussed 47,000 of that amount, which is directly related to the operating of the water system. $1,000 that we're estimating as potential net county costs related to the construction grant for the Yedem-Seville Water System. So these are for ineligible overhead related to admin costs. It's an estimated amount, but we want to be transparent and conservative in our estimate of what the actual cost of that grant would be. The grant is $4 million, and it's under construction right now. So if there's any other questions, happy to answer those for you.
Very good.
Oh, go ahead. I was just going to make a comment. I appreciate in the Fiscal Impact Section that you specifically said that staff would be enforcing watering ordinances and making sure there's not excessive watering. That was one of the problems that we found when we first took over the system, was that there were a lot of marijuana grows actually there.
Yes.
And their water was being obtained through this system, and this system also has a deficit operating budget even without the administrative overhead that you talked about. And so this illegal watering was only adding to the pain that was being incurred by the county. So I appreciate that and glad to see there's that follow-through.
Yes.
And I just want to say that I failed to mention that I also attended the Yedem-Seville CSD last week, and that Ross did an amazing job at bringing all of the new CSD board members up to date with the project and the construction, and so I think this is a worthwhile project to move forward on.
Great, yeah. End result here will be a transfer of this system to that CSD, so that's a good thing for the county.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sherman. Any other items on consent wishing to be pulled or commented on? Any members of the public wishing to pull any items, comment? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
Approval?
Second.
Moved by Supervisor Shuckland, second by Supervisor Valero. Please, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? We could do, I was thinking about roll call, but I don't think for consent. Our next item is item 54, quest from the probation department to approve an agreement with BI Incorporated for electronic monitoring services for adult probationers in the amount not to exceed $350,000 retroactive July 1st, 2018. Hello, Michelle.
Good morning. Good morning, Chairman, Board, CAO, and Council. Michelle Bonwell, Chief Probation Officer, to discuss our contract with behavioral interventions and to provide a brief update with regard to Adult Services Division. Behavioral interventions provides enhanced supervision of clients through the use of electronic monitoring devices and global positioning systems for both adult and juvenile clients released from custody and pending court proceedings, as well as those court ordered to serve custody time as a condition of probation. Just to give you a few stats, for fiscal year 1718, 334 juvenile clients were served, and 1819, 277 juvenile clients were served. For 1718, 413 adult clients were served, and 1819, 370 adult clients were served. It has been recommended that probation consider the expansion of electronic monitoring services for adult clients, as the annual cost to administer to the program is 94% less than the cost of incarceration. In addition, the program has shown 98% success rate. The department is evaluating the established eligibility criteria for the program to determine if modifications can be made while maintaining public safety. The department has also begun evaluating pre-trial evidence-based assessment tools and intervention strategies to address both pre- and post-sentence adult offenders to make strategic and informed recommendations in preparation of legislative changes. As a result of this, the department implemented the Public Safety Assessment in July of last year. This was in response to pending bail reform legislation to provide unbiased detention recommendations to the court based upon a validated risk assessment and to address jail overcrowding. From July 2nd of 2018 to March of 2019, 3,050 PSAs have been completed, which resulted in the release of 1,304 clients from custody, or 43% of those clients assessed. Only a percentage of those clients who are arrested are assessed due to staff shortage, however, probation is working to expand the unit with the ultimate goal of assessing all clients who are booked into jail. In addition, the department recently completed, and I think I sent to all board members, a three-year AB 109 recidivism report on PRCS and 1170 clients, evaluating recidivism for fiscal years 1112 through 1617 for both arrest and conviction. Just as a reminder, PRCS are the post-release community supervision clients, who are the non-serious, non-violent, and non-sex offenders who were released from prison and were formerly supervised by parole. The 1170 clients are those clients who would previously have been committed to state prison prior to the enactment of AB 109 in October of 2011. Overall, the analysis showed a decline in recidivism rates for the PRCS population, and that recidivism for the 1170 clients is static or holding steady. The PRCS cohort consisted of 1,190 clients, and the 1170 consisted of 1,017 clients. Tulare County over a three-year period showed a recidivism rate for the PRCS clients of 46%, compared to the state of California at 52%. The department was also able to locate recidivism data from San Joaquin, Monterey, Santa Barbara, Solano, and Fresno counties. In all counties with the exception of Monterey, which is a substantially smaller county serving less clients, Tulare County's analysis showed a lower recidivism rate, which ranged from 2% to 13% below our counterparts. Data analysis, research, and evaluation was also conducted in the area of validated risk and needs assessment tools aimed at addressing the whole person. As a result of this, an assessment entitled "The Correctional Assessment and Intervention System Work Case" developed by the National Council on Crime and Delinquency was implemented in July of 2018, which provides a supervision strategy model that weaves together a risk assessment and needs assessment and focuses on the underlying motivation for criminal behavior. Since the implementation, the department has been better able and equipped to evaluate the identified needs versus the services available within the community. This resulted in a finding that Tulare County lacked services both in variety and space availability to adequately meet client demands. Therefore, the department began researching effective and available alternative methods for service delivery provided within a one-stop model. In this search, a few providers with varied modalities were identified, with one having an established relationship with the county and having positive outcomes in other counties delivering similar services. The services to be provided will consist of research and evidence-based curriculums in the areas of cognitive behavioral interventions, outpatient substance abuse education, life skills, anger management, community connections and referrals, and parent and family services, just to name a few. Lastly, the department is working to complete a five-year report, which will illustrate department-wide performance outcomes and provide a strong foundation to thereafter continue with annual evaluations. One thing I'd like to highlight, in addition with regard to the adult division, is the department was approached by California State Association of Counties, or CSAT, to be the pilot county to implement, assess, and provide feedback on a recidivism tool developed by their researchers. This partnership proved successful and will be provided to counties across the state as a method to more easily assess and evaluate recidivism data statewide. As a result of this successful partnership, the department is likely to be chosen as the next county to partner with CSAT on the First Results Initiative, which will result in us providing high-quality criminal justice programs that are cost-effective and results-driven. Thank you for your time and for allowing me to provide a bit of a lengthy update with regard to our Adult Services Division.
Thank you, Michelle. I asked this to be pulled and put on untimed, just because I think it's important that the board hears general updates from our departments on a regular basis, and so even though most of what the chief provided really didn't have anything to do with the agreement at hand, I appreciate you indulging my request and providing updates. I really think that the work that you're doing towards the evidence-based reducing recidivism, helping to get our costs lower, is something that's going to be crucial for us moving forward as we continue with our, with any financial situation, just making sure that we're getting people back into society and being productive and, you know, turning away from the ways that got them there in the past, so.
Mr. Chair, I was just going to make a comment. Thank you for the presentation, Chief. I think that, you know, you look statewide at what the results of AB 109 are, and they're not necessarily the same across the board, and I think that Tulare County is a shining example of what AB 109 was intended to do, and that is to obviously shift prisoners to the localities where they're coming from, but by being more local, I feel that people amongst their family, amongst their friends, amongst their community, more closely located in proximity, can have better results, and when you look at the recidivism rates being better, significantly better than state averages and other pure county averages, I think that says a lot about the CCP, the Community Correctional Partnership, and the work that your department's doing. So it's a great opportunity to come and hear from the probation department, but even a better opportunity for you to tell your story, because I think it's a great one. So thank you.
Michelle, the offenders in this program, don't, they pay a fee also?
For which, for the monitoring?
For the monitoring, yeah.
It depends on if, which clients, there are some, there's no fee, so those pending court, they're basically not asking to be released. The court is releasing them based on our recommendation from the PSA, so those clients do not pay. The clients that pay, and it's a sliding scale, it's based on their ability to pay, are those clients that are requested to serve time on the monitor.
Okay.
Those that are sentenced to jail to serve time, and then they...
Do those fees just go back into...
Into just county general fund budget.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to add to that, too, just looking through the, reading through the material, and while you were talking about the recidivism rates and how good that is, and just looking at the different systems that are here with the electronic monitoring and the alcohol, the visser brieter, the voice verification, the home guard, all that stuff, and I was just pretty impressed that it would come a long way from just the old ankle monitors, so very impressive, and thanks for the update.
Thank you.
Any members of the public wishing to speak on this item? If not, I will entertain a motion. Move to approve. Moved by Supervisor Townsend, second by Supervisor Shuckland. Want to do roll call, Madam Clerk?
Yes, please.
Take the roll, please. Or the vote, whatever. Call the, call the vote.
Supervisor Crocker?
Aye.
Supervisor Vandepool?
Aye.
Supervisor Shuckland?
Aye.
Supervisor Valero?
Aye.
Supervisor Townsend?
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we will take up, actually, if we take up items 55, 56, and 57 altogether. And again, this was another request, I just thought it'd be nice to hear what the Tulare Youth Services Bureau's got going.
Absolutely. So good morning. I'll try not to scream this time in the microphone. Good morning, Chairman, Members of the Board, CAO, and County Council. I'm Donna Ortiz, Mental Health Director, and I have with me today Ms. Casey Ennis, who is our Clinic Administrator over the Visalia Adult Clinic, and I have with us today Tim Zavala, Executive Director for Tulare Youth Service Bureau, who are going to speak to all of our services we provide to our children, adolescents, and families.
Thank you.
Good morning, Members of the Board, CAO, and County Council. I'm grateful for the opportunity to come before you this morning and share a bit about the collaborative efforts and coordinated care between Tulare County Adult Mental Health Services and Tulare Youth Service Bureau, or TYSB, and how exactly our services intersect. Within Tulare County Mental Health, we as providers take every opportunity to cross-refer both consumers and support persons to any program, mental health or otherwise, that may be of benefit to those struggling with mental health issues. As Tim Zavala will share in a few minutes, TYSB has many programs in which there are opportunities to screen and connect individuals, families, and adults to needed services. As TYSB provides mental health treatment to youth, whether it be in-school-based services, sexual abuse therapy, intensive care, coordination with CWS Partnership, full-service partnership or FSP Services, or parent-child interaction therapy, both therapists and case managers are able to provide supportive services to family members and support persons in that youth's life to help him or her reach their treatment goals. In doing so, treatment teams at TYSB are many times a first point of contact for an adult that also may be struggling. This may be especially true in the building bridges or perinatal wellness program, where pregnant women or mothers of young children are able to receive mental health services. TYSB clinicians, as part of efficient clinical practice, then are able to refer adults to their own mental health services. Many times, this will result in a referral to VAC, my clinic, Visalia Adult Integrated Clinic, for specialty mental health services if that adult is struggling with significant impairments in daily functioning. This allows us, VAC, and TYSB, to provide coordinated care as both the child and caregiver are provided with therapy and case management. The treatment teams can result to ensure, can consult to ensure the child, adult, and family is provided with all services needed between the two different sites with releases of information signed. Also, if a TYSB clinician or case manager encounters a caregiver or supportive adult that is possibly experiencing a psychiatric crisis and may be a danger to themselves or others or gravely disabled, TYSB staff coordinates a response with the psychiatric emergency services team of Tulare County for further evaluation and possibly a 5150 to transport that individual to inpatient care. Lastly, as a youth serviced by TYSB turns 18 or sometimes beyond, and if they continue to struggle with a mental health diagnosis, TYSB will contact VAC or the adult services provider in that consumer's current area to initiate a transfer of services with no disruption in care. I'm now going to hand off to Tim Zavala, so he can further describe the programs and services provided by TYSB. Thank you.
Good morning, esteemed supervisors, CAO, County Council. Thank you so much for having me here today. I'm excited to talk about our agency. Tulare Youth Service Bureau was incorporated as a 501(c)(3) back in 1974, and we have been providing services to children and families for 45 years now. I'm very privileged to have been there for the last 20 of those years. So we have staff that includes master's level therapists, bachelor's level mental health rehab specialists, we have a board-certified psychiatrist, we have a psychiatric nurse practitioner, we have LVNs, support staff, and a very small administrative staff. Half of our admin staff is here today. Two of us, yeah. Anyway, there's four altogether, so half of us are here. So we are serving over 2,000 children and families every year, and this is about the average for the last decade or so, and it's growing. We have an additional 300-plus that are served through grant programs, so that's a little bit different than the other contractor providers for children's services, is that we actually have some countywide programs and we seek out grant funding so that we can, it's a supplement to the medical contract, so we don't turn anybody away that doesn't have any type of funding. We also have satellite offices in Visalia, Early Mart, and Porterville, and that's so that we can facilitate access to these countywide services for folks. We also partner with Family Resource Centers and other children's clinics in order to provide the countywide programs in those particular areas, so like Dinuba, Lindsay, Woodlake, et cetera. Okay, so on the agenda, it has 55, 56, 57. I'm going to start with 57, if that's okay, because it's really, it's our big, major contract, and it is, under this umbrella, there's multiple programs. Over those really quickly. So we are primarily school-based. The majority of the mental health services we're providing to kids are through schools, referrals with the schools, partnership with the school psychiatrists and the administrative staff, school social workers. So as a result, I have therapists in every single school in our catchment areas, with a couple of rare exceptions. So that is the city of Tulare, the city of Lindsay, all of South County communities, Tipton, Pixley, Early Mart, Alpa, and even down to Delano, because some of the South County kids are going to high school in Delano, so I actually have therapists in Delano on all the campuses there. We're serving over 1,600 kids in schools every year. Talk really quickly about Riverside High School, it's a special hybrid mental... quickly about Riverside High School. It's a special hybrid mental health alternative school that we have in the city of Tulare. It's a partnership with the Tulare High School District, and that is for kids who can't function on a regular high school campus. And so, they come to Countryside, and they contract, them and their families contract to participate in mental health services, and I have a therapist or a rehab specialist there every day of the week, and it's a very successful program. So, Casey mentioned our Child's Treatment Program. This is really our biggest countywide program, as far as the numbers that we're serving. So, we've been doing this since about 1980. And so this is, we're serving well over 300 every year, and this is individual, group, lots of different creative therapies for kids who have been impacted by sexual abuse. Either they have been abused themselves, or they're a sibling of somebody who's been abused, or they're a parent of a child who's been abused. Our Healthy Boundaries Program is a specific program for the parents, provides support, psychoeducation, and even an opportunity for them to process what it's like to be a parent of a child who's abused or has been abused. And then we have our ASRP, which is our Adolescent Sexual Responsibility Program. We actually partner with probation and the juvenile court, and these, this is a sex offense-specific program for adolescents who have either committed a sexual offense or have sexual behavior problems or kind of going in that direction. And so we provide a very specialized program for them to stop the cycle of abuse. We have parent-child interaction therapy. This is a really cool, evidence-based practice for kids that are two to seven and their parent. So this is a great collaboration with CWS. They're, they're referring a lot of these kids to us because the parents, there's been an investigation because they had been abusive, or there's allegations of abuse, and so they, they send them to us. So what happens is you have the parent and the child in one room, you have a one-way mirror, you have the therapist in another room, the parent has a bug in their ear, and the, the therapist has a microphone, and they're coaching them real-time on how to interact appropriately with their child. They are helping them to deal with a tantrum, just, just increasing the parent-child bond. It's a really effective program. It's 16 weeks, and it's just grown and grown. So we have PCIT setups in, two of them in our home office in Tulare, one in Lindsay, and one in Porterville. And we're hoping to get one started in Dinuba hopefully in the next year. So, we're excited about that program. And then we have, at the bottom of that, we have equine facilitated, facilitated psychotherapy. Lots of big words, I know. We call it EFP. It's easier that way. So this is a partnership with HHSA and Happy Trails Riding Academy, where we have groups for our kids to go out. They, they ride the horses, and in real-time, in interacting with the horses, they can work on appropriate boundaries. They can deal with anxiety. It elevates their mood if they're depressed. It's just a really amazing program. We love having that one. So that, that's kind of a summary of all of our regular programs that are under our medical contract. The next one is our FSP program, Full Service Partnership. This is countywide as well. So, FSP, we initiated that about five, six years ago. The, the county asked us to take that over because there was, the hospitalization rates for children, adolescents, was rising at an alarming rate. And essentially, we needed to come alongside these kids that were, we consider high-risk, high-users, to help them and their families to stabilize, so that we can keep them out of the hospitals. As you know, there are no hospitals nearby, and it's not, it's not ultimately helpful in a lot of situations because they come back to the same situation. And so really what we need to do is, whatever it takes philosophy to keep them stable. So we, we have extra services. Case managers will see them multiple times a week. We can provide psychiatric services if they need medication. We can go into the homes, help the parent and the child to interact better. And we also can be very creative. We have some discretionary funds that we can use to just help the kid to be more productive, expressive. So, for example, we can give them music lessons or pay for their football fee, so they can participate in sports after school and so forth. So, buy them a bike, so they can get to therapy, that kind of thing. So that's a really cool thing. Since we implemented, implemented FSP, the hospitalization rates have dropped significantly and stayed down. Incarcerations in juvenile hall have dropped significantly. Explosions and, and suspensions in school have dropped significantly for this particular population. So, it's very effective, and we're really happy to be doing it. Last year, we served about 124 consumers in that program. And then the final program, number 55, is building bridges. So, we are a children's mental health organization. So this is a unique program for us in that we are serving primarily adult females. We do have a couple dads in there, too, which we're all excited about. But this is a maternal mental health program. It's for pregnant women or mothers who have a child that's 12 months or younger, and the mother is experiencing perinatal mood and anxiety disorders. So we all know that it's hard enough for, you know, women to be pregnant and to have a young child, and then to, and the importance of attaching and, and building that secure bond with the child is, is paramount. And if they are struggling with depression and anxiety, and oftentimes significant levels of that, it's very hard to do that. So the impact is, is large on the newborn, but also, we find that many of these women have other children, and sometimes they're in our services. So, we're able to come, come around the whole family, the mom, provide those services. We are able to do trauma resolution. We find that a lot of the women are coming with their own childhood trauma, and so we have evidence-based trauma resolution interventions that we're able to implement and really make a difference in these women's lives. And that's, that's it. Any questions?
Any questions from the board?
I don't have any questions. I just have a comment. Thank you for the overview. Having worked 20 years in my past life in inpatient adolescent psychiatric care, the work that you're doing is, is much needed in our county especially, and thank you.
And just real quick, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Tim. Appreciate you coming and giving this presentation. I think the presentation was worthy of over $7 million, which is what these three contracts really amount to. You do provide a tremendous service in our communities, and I really appreciate the fact that these services are not only focused in incorporated cities where services regularly exist, but they are very, very present in unincorporated communities as well, where often the need for these services is even higher. So, I appreciate the presentation and thank all of your staff for the work they do, because I know that it's not always easy, but the work that they do to help this vulnerable population and try to give them the support they need to get back on the right track is very important to Tulare County and the future of the county as well. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
I'll just share that, again, thank you for the support and access that you provide, especially for our youth. I know that when I was on the school board for the past six years, there would have been an increase in social, emotional, and behavior issues, not only in Cutler-Rosey Joint Unified, but also across the county. And so, I thank you for providing the immediate and long-term solutions to make sure that we can support our, our vulnerable population. So, thank you.
I have one other question. Do you do, you talk about the equine therapy. Do you do any other type of animal-assisted therapy?
We have had a therapy dog on the premises at our main office, yeah.
There are some, because there are some groups also in Tulare County that specifically do that, so, thank you.
Yeah.
I appreciate the presentation. I know that Supervisor Shuckland, she mentioned she was on a podcast recently, and to steal some of the comments that she made, I think it's, it's, we don't necessarily get the credit for all the work that the county does on a preventative side on many of these different social issues. And so I, I'm very appreciative of the work that, that HHSA does on a regular basis with, with you guys as well, providing that service, because we're, it's, it's something that's crucial and part of the mix as far as how, how to keep our community safe and how to keep it healthy. And so I appreciate the great work that you guys are doing. Thank you. Any other comments from, members of the board or the public? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move for approval of items 55, 56, and 57.
Second. Moved by Supervisor Shuckland, second by Supervisor Valero. Madam Clerk, will you please-
Yes, this is for items number 55, 56, and 57. Supervisor Crocker?
Aye.
Supervisor Vanderpool?
Aye.
Supervisor Shuckland?
Aye.
Supervisor Valero?
Aye.
Supervisor Townsend?
Aye. The votes are unanimous. Motion passes. I will go to our last untimed item, item 58. Request from the Board of Supervisor Staff to authorize a Step Up #LEAD Youth Program to be funded in the amount of $100,000.
All right. Good morning, Chairman, Members of the Board. Samantha Ferrero, Board Representative for your Board of Supervisors, here before you with a request to authorize the Step Up #LEAD Youth Program be funded for $100,000 beginning on July 1st, 2019. Much like some of the other untimed items today, I'd also like to use this opportunity to provide a brief update on the Step Up transition, since staff has been working on that since May 7. But I'll begin with the agenda item before you. So this item allocates $100,000 to go to the #LEAD Program for Summer Employment. It's an administrative transfer to the Workforce Investment Board, who oversees the funding for that, so that it's used correctly for our young people to be employed. Some background on this funding. Since 2006, the Workforce Investment Board of Tulare County has administered a summer youth program for young people to gain work experience over the summer. Since 2013, when the #LEAD Program was created, this funding has been specifically allocated for #LEAD Youth to be, to gain experience in the summer, in summer employment. As you recall, last summer, some of you may recall, last summer, we had a #LEAD Youth participant in our office as an intern, and so this funding went to pay for her work hours. As long as the students successfully complete the program, they're eligible for summer employment, kind of like a capstone experience for them at the end of their nine-month-long program, where they've gained, you know, experience, volunteering, filling out resumes, and now it's time for them to put their skills to the test. They're employed in a variety of different opportunities. We try our best to match them up with an employer that meets their future goals. So throughout the four communities where we have cohorts, Visalia, Tulare, Porterville, and now North County, Dinuba, Cutler-Rosey, we work to find experience in, in the private sector and also the public sector as well. I know HHSA is a wonderful partner and always graciously takes on a lot of youths. I think it's good. They gain experience, but they're also gaining the soft skills of having to navigate a professional office setting, which is always a fun learning experience at first, so.
So you don't want them at the Board of Supervisors?
I think it's a great place for them to gain experience in an office setting, a professional office setting.
What not to do.
Maybe, maybe not so much this year. As you know, our, our schedules, we kind of bounce around project to project as board staff. So, but HHSA graciously takes that on for the county. So thank you very much to our partners there. As I stated earlier, I'd also like to use this opportunity to update your board on the Step Up transition. As you recall, on May 7th, at the work session, staff presented a presentation with a request for some feedback on how to move the program into the future and to staff the program, based on some discussions from your board. So the options presented were to either RFP the program out to a nonprofit in the community, or to work with some of our county departments as we recommended Health and Human Services or probation. The direction from your board was to work with Health and Human Services. So staff with the CAO's office has been working with HHSA. They've identified staff to take over as the staff lead for the Step Up program. So yesterday, I met with Ashley Loftus, who is an administrative specialist with Health and Human Services, to begin that transition. So, as you know, there's a lot of programs, so we're taking it slow over the summer and introducing her to each of our various programs as we're kind of in, in that in-between area before we get going for the 2019-20 program year. I just wanted to bring that to your attention, because you will see some agenda items from staff bringing contracts before your board, so we can get those programs contracted out for the 19-20 program year, so that the transition is smooth for staff to take over. So, we'll be meeting with the Step Up Advisory Committee over the summer, introducing her to the Youth Commission, and then to the various committees that oversee the various programs, such as the Youth Challenge and the #LEAD Program. So, that's an update. I know that this is an action item, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Very good.
I have a question, Sam.
Yeah.
As far as the #LEAD employment, do we usually use all of the funds that are allocated?
Yes, yes.
So we have a good, a good-
Yes. There's always a good group of students to pull from. Now, we do have a fourth cohort, so I anticipate that the funds will be expended. We do have more students. They're funded at, or they're, you know, minimum wage, wages is what, what they get for their, their summer employment.
Okay. And then as far as the Step Up, I think it's a, a good move, once again, as we talked before, into the HHSA. Thank you again to the folks there. I think it'll just make the program even better than it already is. I just hope that we continue to receive reports and let us know what's going on, so that we can maintain our support and participation in any activities that we can.
Of course. As a board program, we'll keep you abreast of all updates in the program.
So I had a quick question with regards to the transition, which, again, echoing Supervisor Shuckland's comments, a great idea of moving it to a program entity or the agency itself. But I had a question with regards to other departments, and should they request outside the HHSA umbrella, but maybe from FIRE or from the sheriffs, would it be possible, I know it's probably not our discretion, but would it be possible for those outside departments or agencies to then tap into those resources by making that connection with HHSA?
I think there's a natural nexus for that with the Step Up Advisory Committee. There are various seats on there for, for some of our county departments, but we're always looking to collaborate and, and leverage existing programs that exist within the county. I know that we do partner with our law enforcement partners on resource fairs and events like that. They've always been very willing to participate with us there. I think the communication lines are open, so, you know, any, any possible ways to partner, I think, you know, if you'd let us or, or future Step Up staff know, that's something that could be explored.
All right. Thank you.
I just have a comment. Not a question, but Sam, thanks a lot for all of your work in this area over, over the past, and as you continue and through the transition. And, and I think it's really great about the #LEAD, you know, it used to be something that, you know, students would do over the summer. They'd go, you know, get, get summer work. That kind of waned over the, over the years, and I'm really excited to see that kind of coming back into, into the forefront in the public. And so, for us to be helping in any way, provide those, those placements over the summer, I think is really good. So thanks a lot for your work in it.
Great. Thank you, Supervisor.
I just echo Supervisor Valero's comments and, and say that I think that with giving discernment to HHSA staff, but looking for key partnerships where it makes sense, and trying to work together, you know, we talk a lot about being one county family, and so making sure that we can utilize the resources that, that are already existing and try and maximize partnerships is always a good thing.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board or comments, members of the public? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Moved by Supervisor Townsend, second by Supervisor Vanderpool. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Sure. Supervisor Crocker?
Aye.
Supervisor Vanderpool?
Aye.
Supervisor Shuckland?
Aye.
Supervisor Valero?
Aye.
Supervisor Townsend?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
We, we don't have on the agenda, an item that we've had in the past, so I'm just going to bring it up. Any, any future agenda items that any board member would like to direct staff, towards having? I didn't think there would be. So seeing none, we will, Madam Counselor, do we have any need for closed session?
We do, Mr. Chairman. Items A through F will be heard in closed session. I do not expect any announcements out, so if there is no public comment on the closed session items, we can adjourn.
Very good.
Thank you.
This meeting is adjourned into closed session. This meeting is adjourned in closed session.